Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of Oxnard Planning Commission for Thursday, September 4, 2025. The meeting will come to order at 6:01 PM. The public may view the meeting from home on the city's website, Spectrum Channel 10, Frontier Channel 35, or on the city's YouTube website.
Recording in progress.
To participate in the meeting, the public may provide comments to the Planning Commission via email at planning@oxnard.org, no later than 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting, or through the city's website at oxnard.org/city-meetings, or call the Planning Division office. Additionally, those wishing to speak can dial the phone number listed at the bottom of the screen, follow the instructions to access the meeting, and press *9 to raise your hand, indicating your intention to speak on the agenda item being discussed. Madam Secretary, can we please have the roll call?
Chair Arrejo.
Present.
Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Nash.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We will now move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pearson, will you kindly lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. The next agenda item is see public comments on items not on the agenda. At this time, a person may address the Planning Commission on matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, including information consent items and any time not appearing on the agenda. The Planning Commission cannot take action on any item presented during public comments that is not on the agenda, and such item may only be referred to the Commission's secretary. Persons wishing to speak on public hearing items should do so at the time of the public hearing. Madam Secretary, are there any public comments for items not on the agenda?
No, there's none.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The minutes for the August 7, 2025, meeting have been distributed. If there are no corrections, a motion is in order. Commissioner Nash.
Chair, move to approve.
It's been moved by Commissioner Nash to approve the minutes of August 7, 2025, as distributed. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Dr. Stewart. Seeing no further comments, Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Nash.
Aye.
Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez.
Yes.
Chair Arrejo.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Section E, Ex parte declarations for public hearing items. Please state any ex parte declarations, if any. I'll move across the dais, Commissioner Dr. Lopez.
None, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
None, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Nash.
None, thank you.
Thank you, and none for myself. The next agenda item is Section F, Public Hearing. Agenda item F1, Leftchurn Incorporated Magnavino Cellars Winery Public Realm Brewery Alcohol Special Use Permit, Planning and Zoning Permit Number 25-510-JAS01, Special Use Permit Alcohol Located at 961 North Rice Avenue, Suite 5. A request to modify the existing special use permit number 09510-06 to include a new Type 23 alcohol beverage control license, small beer manufacturer, and a new Type 04 ABC license distilled spirits manufacturer, with a proposed 1705 square foot expansion to include a new brewery and taproom to an existing 5237 square foot winery located at 961 North Rice Avenue, Suite 5. For purposes of this staff report, the foregoing project description shall be referred to as the project filed by David Rice, business owner on behalf of property owner Mallheart Properties Company, 1,000 South C Word Avenue. City staff John Miguel Dalby, associate planner. Per Measure M, a staff presentation has been prerecorded, and the link has been posted to YouTube per previously approved standing role. Staff can provide a brief summary of the prerecorded presentation in addition to other analysis at this time. Does staff wish to give some introductory remarks?
Hello, my name is John Dalby, or John Miguel, whichever you would prefer. I'm a recent graduate, assistant planner here at the City of Oxnard, and we believe that this project meets the standards set forth by the city. There is adequate site parking, and these two-type alcohol licenses will expand business upon the site.
Thank you very much. We will have the applicant present at this time, if there is any. Does the applicant have a presentation?
Chair Arrejo.
Oh, Mr. Pearson.
We did receive two comment letters that John wanted to highlight before moving on to the applicant presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. We received two comments. One from a Ms. Sally Hall, employed by Magnavino Cellars. She is in support of the project, as she believes the sales of beer and liquor on-site will expand the community and business in the area. There have been multiple requests to expand upon these sales. There was also a second comment this afternoon, just now, from a Mr. Rogers, also employed by Magnavino Cellars. He is also in support of the project as well, as it will create more jobs and revenue for the city. There was also the question from Chair Arrejo regarding police conditions 41C and 41D. As these were struck from the provided police record, or police report, they were not included in the provided staff report, and staff reports' conditions of approval, and no changes are necessary.
Thank you very much, sir. We will now go to the applicant. If you have 15 minutes, you can use it at your leisure. Please begin.
I definitely don't need that much time. But good evening, thank you for your time. My wife and I are excited to introduce Public Realm Brewing Company, which will be joined Magnavino Cellars in creating a unique, community-focused gathering space. For 16 years, Magnavino Cellars has been a proud part of this community, and Public Realm will build on that legacy to offer not just great beer and wine, but be a hub for music, local events, and community family-friendly experiences. Public Realm Brewing Company was designed to bring people together. Our motto is simple: Public Realm Brewing Company, where connections are made and kept through craft beer. We support local artists and musicians, provide a welcoming venue for our neighbors to connect, and host events that strengthen community ties. By creating new jobs and partnering with local nonprofits, we aim to give back to the city that has given so much to our family. We believe in small business, community engagement, giving back, and creating spaces that enrich the lives of those around us. Thank you for considering Public Realm Brewing Company as an addition to Magnavino Cellars, and for supporting our vision to bring people together in a meaningful way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I miss your name, sir.
David Rice.
Mr. Rice. Thank you very much, appreciate that. At this time, members may ask questions of either the applicant and/or staff. Commissioner, or Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
Yes, I have some questions for the applicant.
Sir.
So, basically, you're already doing this business. The police didn't have any name, might have had to give you a glowing report, I guess is how to say that.
Okay.
Your employees are going through the right training already. You have all of those things that are required as far as, you know, the right kind of cash registers and all those kinds of security measures and so forth. So, we're not doing anything new, right?
That's correct.
We're just making it bigger.
Right, yes.
Bring on a few more employees. So, I just say that just to make sure that I understand, you know, what we're doing, and very, very little, if no, change.
That's correct. The only thing, we are adding just the brewery element.
Right.
And that's really it.
Right, but the business itself functions the same way as it's functioning today. It's just a little bit bigger, a little bit different stuff to deal with.
Right.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dr. Stewart. Any others on the commission at this time? I have a couple of questions. My, I think they're all going to be to staff. I see that this is going to be for a bigger space, but I just want to just confirm that we're really, we're just, we're just deciding on just the alcohol special use permit, correct?
Correct.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I do have one question for the applicant. Is the reason that you're adding a business license, you just, you see the need for it? I just want to see what was the reason you're doing it now, other than when you first started at the location?
Well, we were actually new owners. We bought the winery a year and a half ago. So, as this year and a half progressed, we were originally always looking for a space for a brewery. But we found out when Magnavino was for sale, we used to be wine club members, we used to go there. Me and my wife went there when we first started dating, so it was a special place to us. So, we bought it and knew, once we bought it, that we were going to always expand into a brewery also, and have the brewery and the winery together.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. I believe those are my questions at this time. Any others on the commission before we go to public comment? Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comment. Madam Secretary, is there any public comment for this agenda item?
No, there is none.
Okay, thank you. Are there any closing remarks from staff?
None.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. We'll move on to deliberation. Commission, Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
I'm ready to move the recommended action.
Thank you. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you, Chair. I think, if my colleagues will indulge me, I just want to go over some of the reasons why I will support staff's recommendation. And these are all directly lifted from the staff report, verbatim. The annual crime rate is below the average annual citywide rate. There is not an undue concentration under the provisions of California Business and Professions Code, Section 23958.4. Several nearby business operators were contacted and interviewed regarding this business request to add additional alcohol licenses and modify their business model. None of the business operators had any concerns about these proposed changes. It is believed that the service of alcoholic beverages at this business will have little, if any, adverse impact on the community or policing services. The proposed project expansion complies with Oxnard's parking requirements. And finally, no public comments regarding project for an additional alcohol outlet in the neighborhood were received. So, having gone over those, I'm ready to support this, this, this action.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Any others? I have a couple of comments, so I just want to, I'll thank Mr. Rice for providing that context and color to the permit. Unfortunately, it's very technical and dry-based in regards to the staff report, and so we appreciate getting the fuller picture in regards to what you're doing at that location. When the location or the address was revealed, I had to really check if I was outside the area, because it's quite close to where I live. And kudos to you in regards to making that a place that people want to go, because it's in a quite industrial place. And so, that's great that there's not going to be a problem with the neighbors, or in regards to too many parking, or in regards to cars and everything like that, and traffic. And, and, oh, what's it? I forgot the last point. Oh, now I remember. And usually, my main thing at looking at these alcohol permits, really, my only thing is in regards to the safety. And Commissioner Nash nailed it on the head that, if anything, of all the alcohol permits that have come to us, at least before me and Dr. Lopez for the past five years, it's, it's the safest place, if anything, to have another or any other additional alcohol permit. So, I see no reason why this can't be approved, and it would get my support, too, so. If there's no other comments before us, motion is in order. Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
I'll move the recommended action.
It's been moved by Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
I will second.
And seconded by Commissioner Nash to find the project to be categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to sequel guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, and adopt Resolution 2025XX, approving Planning and Zoning Permit Number 25-510-JAS01 for an alcohol special use permit, subject to certain findings and conditions. Is there any deliberation on the motion before us? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, can we have the roll call, please?
Vice Chair Dr. Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner Nash.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chair Arrejo.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, and congratulations. Before we move on to the next section, study session reports, which are none, if I could, I believe, Mr. Dalby, this is your first time in front of the Planning Commission. If you could just introduce who you are to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Well, hello. Yes, I go by John Miguel Legally. Everyone calls me John. I'm a recent graduate from grad school on the East Coast and moved back here to be closer to my hometown of Santa Barbara, and really looking forward to the future here in the City of Oxnard.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. As mentioned before, moving on to study session reports, and with none listed, we'll move on to Section H, Planning Commission Business. I'm, the point of me bringing this up was to do a review mostly for the newer and newest member of the Planning Commission, and so, if there's no objection, I'm in the request that we postpone this until the next meeting. Seeing no objection, we'll postpone this and look at if there's any comments from the Planning Commission before we go on to the next section of Community Development Business. Seeing none, we'll go to the Community Development's staff update. Mr. Pearson.
Hello, Chair Arrejo, Commissioner. So, staff would like to provide just an update on the active projects that are going on here in the city. We previously brought this before the commission, and so, we thought it was time to bring it back. So, we provided a list in the packet with the projects, and then we also have some slides just to provide the visuals for the projects. And so, we have Christopher and Roy, who are going to be walking through these updates. So, I'll hand it over to the...
Thank you, Joe. Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, both my fellow planner, Christopher Murillo, and I will be providing you with a brief overview of the current development projects that have been completed, as well as the projects that are still under construction in the city. For the first half of the presentation, I will be sharing updates on the residential projects, including those that are mixed-use, after which, my fellow planner, Christopher, will be taking over to discuss both the commercial and industrial projects currently in process. Please keep in mind that the information being shared tonight is in approximation, as a majority of the projects are still in development, and the timelines listed are only an estimate. If you have any questions regarding the, regarding certain projects, we may be able to answer them at this time. However, if not, you are welcome to pose the questions to planning staff post-meeting. All right, so here we have a map of all the active projects in the city. As you can see in the bottom corner, we have a colored key to help differentiate between the different types of projects. I will begin with the projects that are exclusively residential. The first residential project we have for you is the North Shore at Mandalay Bay, located at Harbor Boulevard and Fifth Street. The development includes 183 single-family residences. 109 of those are to be detached condominiums, and the development also includes private streets on the 90.26 acre site. The development is going to include open space and common areas for the residents, as well as a public bike and walking path. As of right now, its current status is that of just grading for the site, and the estimated completion date for it is still to be decided, or to be determined, I should say.
Can I ask a question about that project?
Sure.
What is the status of the Edison Canal?
I'm sorry?
What is the status of the Edison Canal?
That, I'm not too sure. I will have to get back on you then, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and I'm sorry I interrupted.
Now, moving along to the Edding Road Apartments Project, which is located at 2161 East Edding Road. The Edding Road Apartments' development includes 58 units, 57 of which will be 100% affordable. In addition to one manager's unit, the development includes 1,280 square-foot community area that will provide a sitting space, laundry room, management offices, in addition to veteran and farm worker services. As of today, its current status is complete, and the project was completed back in July of this year. The Pleasant Valley Apartments Project is located at 2,300 East Pleasant Valley Road. The development will provide 48 units, eight of which will be affordable, in addition to indoor amenities, such as a lounge area with a media center, as well as outdoor amenities, including seating and dining areas with fire pits and barbecue areas. The project is still in plan check, and its estimated date of completion is still to be determined. Now, here we have the Lockwood 1 Senior Apartments Project, that's located at 2,001 Outlet Center Drive. This development is 100% affordable, and will be providing 173-unit apartment community for active seniors. That includes a community recreational building and pool. The project is currently under construction, and its estimated date of completion is that of early 2026. The Lockwood 2 Senior Apartments Project is also located at 2,001 Outlet Center Drive. The development is, once again, 100% affordable, and with 168-unit apartment community, again, for active seniors, and this project also includes both the community recreational building and pool. Similar to the Lockwood 1 Senior Apartments Project, it's in construction, and again, is estimated to be complete by early 2026. The Encanto Development is located at 1101 West Second Street. The Encanto Development consists of 27 single-family detached homes, each with three bedrooms and two bathrooms, including seven affordable homes. The current status is that it's in building construction, and it's estimated to be completed by fall of this year. Cypress Place at Garden City is located at 5482 and 5536 Cypress Road. The Cypress Place at Garden City Development is a 150-unit apartment complex that includes 7,967 square-foot common learning and community building, with a centralized laundry room and community kitchen, as well as additional onsite amenities, including outdoor recreational areas for residents. The project is currently under construction, with its Phase 1 estimated to be completed by early 2026. As for Phase 2, that is still to be determined. The Casa Alente project is located at 1245, 1255 North Oxnard Boulevard. This development involves converting the former Vagabond Inn into a 70-unit supportive housing complex. The project is currently occupied under a temporary certificate of occupancy, with its date of completion estimated to be in early 2026. The Panorama Apartments Project, formerly known as the Four Apartments, which is located around the River Park and Landing area, is located at 2,700 North Ventura Road. The Panorama Apartments is a five-story apartment complex that will be providing 333 units, featuring a six-level centrally-located parking structure. The project is partially occupied, and it's estimated to be completed by early 2026. Here we have the F Street Condos, located at 301, through 321 North F Street. This residential development includes 40 condominiums, including four affordable units within 10 two-story buildings. The project is considered complete and was completed back in April of this year, 2025. The Portofino Place Project is located between Fifth Street and Portofino Place. The Portofino Place development consists of 90 condominium units, nine of which will be affordable. The project is set to include private roads and will be a gated community that will provide onsite amenities for its residents. It is still under plan check, with its date of completion to be determined. And so, we have the Wagon Wheel Development, that is set to provide 1,500 residential units with 50,000 square feet of commercial space. It also includes parks, transit area, and multi-use path, once it's complete. As part of the development included in it, it has the Oxnard Flats, which provides 96 condo units, and it is considered complete. It is Lot 8 of Wagon Wheel. The Wagon Wheel Development also provides Park Place 2 at lots 5 and 9, that is set to, that is set to provide 78 townhomes. Its current status, it is under construction, and the estimated completion is to be determined at a later time. The Mayfair portion of the project is located at lots 4 and 10, with 88 condos, 56 of which have been built. Lot 4 is still under construction, while Lot 10, it has been completely built. Again, the estimated completion is to be determined. Moving on, we have the mixed-use projects. To begin, we have the Navigation Center, which is located here at 241 West Second Street. The project is set to provide 56 units, of which all of them will be affordable, thus being a 100% affordable project. The Navigation Center is a five-story mixed-use building that includes 13,000, 13,078 square-foot permanent homeless shelter on the ground floor, with, again, the 56 affordable supportive housing units located above it. It is still in construction, and it's estimated to be, estimated to be completed by fall of 2025. The Billboard Lofts Project is located at 800 South A Street. The development consists of 55 units within a five-story mixed-use building with 4,508 square feet of commercial space located on the ground floor. The project is still in plan checked, and its date of completion is to be determined. C Street Apartments are located at 761 South C Street. The C Street Apartments' development includes 175 units within a five-story mixed-use building with 1,145 square feet of commercial space on the bottom floor. Again, this project is still in plan check, with its estimated date of completion to be determined at a later time. Moving on to the Sandpiper Apartments Project, which is located at 155 South A Street. The development is a 56-unit, five-story mixed-use building with 3,545 square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. And this project is also in plan check, and its date of completion is to be determined. And here we have the Aspire Apartments that is located at five thirty-six, five thirty-eight Metta Street. The Aspire Apartments Project includes the development of eighty-eight units within a five-story mixed-use building that provides one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight square feet of office space on the ground floor. Similar to the three previous projects, it is also in plan check with the date of completion to be determined as well. And lastly, for the mixed-use projects, we have Rio Urbana, which is located at twenty-seven fourteen East Vineyard Avenue. The development consists of one hundred and sixty-seven condominium units and fifteen thousand square feet of office building space. This project is also in plan check and it, as far as its estimated completion date, that is to be determined at a later time. And with that, I conclude my portion of the presentation and will be passing this over to my colleague Christopher. Thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. My name is Christopher. I'm a new assistant planner. I started in November twenty twenty-four and I have the pleasure of presenting the commercial and industrial projects that are being currently developed right now. To transition from what Roy was talking about for the mixed-use projects, we would like to start focusing our attention more towards the commercial developments of the city. As we move forward, please, I'd like to reiterate that the project information being displayed is based off the latest approved permit information. So the project information is subject to change as the development continues. But if you have any further project-specific questions or any updates concerning the projects presented, please feel free to reach out to the planning staff after the meeting has concluded. To start off, we have the U-Haul of North Oxnard. This is going to be located at twenty-four twenty North Oxnard Boulevard. It features five thousand three hundred and forty-one square feet of retail space for truck rental and storage, thirty-four thousand five hundred and thirty-seven square feet of container storage, and two hundred and one, seven hundred and ninety-six thousand square feet of mini warehouse. It is currently under construction. The commercial component of the development and the estimated date of completion is to be determined. The True Hotel is located at one eighty West Avenue. It is a five-story, four hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy square foot hotel with eighty-eight rooms. It's going to be located in a shopping center shared with Food For Less. It's going to be featuring two, two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven square feet of landscaped area and required eighty-eight parking spaces. The estimated date of completion is going to be first quarter of twenty twenty-six. Moving on to the Vineyard Starbucks, it's going to be located at twenty-five fifty-one North Vineyard Avenue. The development is a conversion of an existing Wendy's restaurant into a two thousand four hundred and fifty square foot Starbucks with a drive-thru. The development improvements will consist of a small addition, facade changes, revised signage, and upscale landscaping. The drive-through modifications to allow for an extended queuing line to allow for the maximum capacity of sixteen vehicles. This also includes a request for parking modifications to allow for a reduction in the amount of required parking from fifty parking spaces to thirty-five parking spaces that are going to be allowed onsite. The project of the process, the status of the project is completed, so you could go there after this meeting. Next, we have Starbucks located at Ventura Boulevard. The specific address is going to be twenty-eleven North Oxnard Boulevard. It's going to be a one-acre site at an existing shopping center that's proposing a thirty, three thousand four hundred and seven, uh, three thousand four-
I'm sorry, Mr. Mario, can you say the address again? It doesn't match with this slide that you said.
Seventeen twenty Ventura Boulevard, excuse me.
Thank you for that. Thanks.
Is the demolition existing structure onsite and is going to be constructing eighteen hundred square feet of new restaurant space? It will provide twenty-five parking spaces and will have a queue designed to hold fifteen vehicles. As of right now, the building, the current status of the project is a building inspection phase and it's going to be completed at fall twenty twenty-five so soon. Next, we have the In-N-Out at Ventura Boulevard. This is going to be located directly across, directly across from the previous Starbucks. It's going to be located at seventeen hundred Ventura Boulevard. It's proposing to demolish an existing structure and construct three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five square feet of new restaurant space. The project will provide seventy-four parking spaces and will have a queue designed to hold twenty-three vehicles. The current status is completed and is currently open to the public. Next, we have the gas stations, the gas station and convenience store at the Landing. The location of this is at twenty-seven ninety North Ventura Road. It is construction of a three thousand four hundred and forty-two square foot gas station and a convenience store building with a one thousand one hundred and sixty square foot car wash building and a eight hundred and seventy-five square foot car wash equipment storage building on North Ventura Road. The status of the project is completed and it is open to the public currently. Next, we have a multi-tenant commercial building that's going to be located nearby at the Landing. The project location is at seven fifty-one through seven sixty-seven Town Center Drive. Because it's going to be construction of a seven thousand two hundred and thirty-six square foot multi-tenant commercial building with a drive-through intended for one of the commercial restaurant tenants onsite. The current status of this project is completed. Current tenants include Handel's Ice Cream, Starbucks, a nectar juice bar, Kidsy Dental, and Orthopedics, Orthodontics, excuse me. Next, directly across on the landing or the multi-tenant building, we have the Shake Shack at the Landing. This is going to be seven eleven Town Center Drive. It's a construction of a three thousand four hundred and seventy square foot drive-through restaurant on approximately one acre site. As of right now, the project is currently open and it features double drive-through with double lane, queuing lanes for the restaurant. Next, we have the Town Play Suites and Spring Hill Suites at the Landing. The locations of these two developments are going to be at seven oh one and eight oh one Town Center Drive respectively. It's going to be development of two four-story hotels. Each hotel is featured to contain one hundred and twenty room. The Town Play Suites, excuse me, the Spring Hill Suites is a seven, seventy-six thousand gross square foot hotel. Amenities are to include a swimming pool, patio, breakfast bars, mall market adjacent to the lobby, approximately seven hundred and eighty square feet, and a one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven square foot meeting room. For the Town Play Suites, it's going to be an eighty thousand one hundred and thirty-three gross square foot hotel. It's going to contain one hundred and twenty-one guest room. Amenities are to include a swimming pool and patio, breakfast bar, guest laundry, a six hundred square foot fitness center, a four hundred square foot meeting room, and it's going to be open twenty-four hours a day, staffed by a total of forty employees. The estimated date of completion is going to be sometime within the next year, twenty of twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. Last but not least, we have the industrial development that's going to be part of the city. To start, we have the one oh one Logistics Center located at Sacquioco Farms. This is located south of the one oh one freeway between Rice Avenue and Del Norte Boulevard. The proposed project is four warehouses totaling seven hundred and seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty square feet with related site improvements. The project site is forty point eighty-seven acres within the Sacquioco Farms Business Park. The project will be approved alongside lot line adjustments for the respective warehouses. As of right now, the current status of the project is at the grading for the site and an estimated date of completion is going to be to be determined. Next, we have the Trojan Storage of Oxnard. This is going to be located at two one 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 Auto Center Drive. It's construction of a one-story and three-story self-storage facility on a two-point-three-four acre site. The estimated date of completion is to be determined. However, it was just approved for its framing inspection moving forward. So is it going to be more inspections afterwards? Next, we have the Arturus Avenue Outdoor Storage Yard. The, this is going to be construction of a circle storage and parking facility on a nine-acre site. This is going to be holding shopping container or shipping containers, tractors, trailers, trucks, and automotive vehicles. It's currently in construction and the estimated date of this is to be determined. Project would feature a total of three thousand, three hundred thousand fifty, three hundred fifty-two thousand five hundred one square feet paved parking, twenty-seven thousand thirty-eight square feet of landscaping, thirty-eight overhead lights, four fire hydrants, and a bio swell and storm drain on the southern edge of the parking lot. Lastly, we have the Arturus Avenue Coal Storage. This is going to be located at fifty-nine eighty and fifty-nine ninety Arturus Avenue. This construction of a one hundred and three, seven hundred and five thousand square foot steel frame coal storage building is to feature thirty-six truck loading docks, two hundred and seventy truck container storage spaces. They're able to stack up to ninety containers, three levels high. This current status is in plan check, means it's still being reviewed by building and planners, and estimated date of this project is to be determined. We thank you planning commissioners for your time and this concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Solis and Mr. Mario. I know that both of you said that if we had any questions that we would wait till after. So to get around that, I'm going to ask for any comments or questions for the commission. We'll pose them to Mr. Pearson and he can be the one to transfer to you in case. But if you don't have the answers to the questions, I understand because there were a lot of projectsters, he might not have it in detail. And then we just ask for any answers to any possible questions at a later time at your leisure. So, thank you very much. I'll go, vice for sol, Vice Chair Dr. Stewart, and Commissioner Nash.
All right, I just have two. One, can I get that briefing, the chart sent to me, to my email, so I can look at them? Secondly, and I don't know how difficult it is, but it would be nice for like the houses, the apartments and so forth to see what the square footage is for the units. Now, if the units are so many different types, like one bedroom, one bedrooms and two bedrooms and a one-bedroom may have three or four different variations, then there would be a lot of data to fill up the chart and it wouldn't be necessary. But if it's simple, it would be nice to just know what the square footage is, just to see how big these units are. And that's what I have.
So, Vice Chair Dr. Stewart, in relation to your first question, yes, we can share that. Also, the larger presentation is up on the city's website, which there's a link in the packet as well. But we can share that and this does have some more updated photos in it as well. In relation to the second question, if there was a specific project that you wanted to look at, we could look at sharing that information. But yeah, the sizes are going to vary kind of across all the different types of projects, but if there was one in particular, we can definitely pull that.
Okay. I guess I kind of have in my mind what the typical like one-bedroom apartment size is. So when I see the numbers going down, it says, okay, they're making more units, but the units are smaller. Or they're making less units and the units are bigger, or they're just making, you know, a great bunch of units that are larger than the average. So that's, that's the kind of thing I just want to look at. Same with houses. Now, if we're building these houses and the average house is certain size, you know, and then so these houses are a little bit less than the size of the average one, so you can squeeze more into the area. But you know what you're getting. And so I'm just kind of getting a feel for what we're doing around the city and what it looks like.
Yeah, so we can look at providing some additional information on that.
Thank you, Vice Chair Dr. Stewart. And Mr. Pearson, if I could add on to the first part of his request, can you just do that to the planning commission? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pearson. Commissioner Nash.
Thank you Chair. Mr. Pearson, do you, can you offer any insight as to the status of the Edison Canal?
I'm not aware of any specific development associated with it at this point in time. The North Shore Project isn't necessarily impacting that canal directly, or at least there's no changes really being proposed to that. So I'm not aware of any status changes to the canal.
Okay, thank you. And just a general comment, you know, we are under a mandate to approve and build a lot of housing. And I think that this presentation demonstrates what a great job the planning staff and our development partners have done. So I'm very happy to see, to see that and to see it all done within our urban restriction boundary is even more gratifying. So I know that we've always had, you know, questions and comments and issues with housing. But I think overall, we've done a good job. So I do want to thank Mr. Pearson and his staff for moving things along. So thank you. And, and kudos to the, to the city council also for having a vision and implementing that vision within the dictates, the twenty thirty general plan. So I'm, it's very gratifying to sit on a planning commission that, that's had, that's played some role in that. So kudos to everybody. So that's all. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Nash. Any others from the commission? Mr. Dr. Lopez.
Just to add, wonderful presentation. I think, you know, certainly my five years here, we haven't necessarily seen a presentation like this with the status of all the projects that are in progress or, you know, have been completed. Perhaps we've seen it with a CIP report, right? When those have been distributed, but in terms of a presentation here at, at a commission meeting, just wonderful job to you all for updating. You know, oftentimes when we're driving around the city, we see, you know, the projects, certainly the the apartment complex at River Park, right off of the freeway, and then the Lockwood Apartments as well that are under construction. So to kind of just see the full spectrum of all the construction and development going on. And again, a high number of available housing units, you know, across the stock of, of housing options for, for folks. It's, it's great to see and I know there's more down the pipeline with the Teal Club project than others as well. So, yeah, just great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dr. Lopez. And I was, I forgot to intro to this section that when talking with Mr. Pearson either earlier this year or last year, just thinking about whatever study sessions or what extra other than the public hearings that we wanted to hear. One of them was definitely to have staff updates. And so I, I thought there would be something maybe on the range of every three to six months, but I thought there would only be so many projects, but this was definitely a lot. And so I would want to put that on the city staff to do every three to six months. But I'm hopeful whoever's going to be the chair next year that you just make, try to make this at least once a year, once during your term. So, and then also, I just wanted to remind us on the commission, the results of our decisions and definitely like what my other fellow commissioners said, the hard work of staff getting all of these projects simultaneously. So really, it's just amazing. I had a couple of questions and then a comment to wrap up and then we can move on to a German. This one specifically on the wagon wheel. I was kind of surprised with the amount of parking that I saw in the back and was that just going to be for residential? Or is that for everyone? I know that's very specific, but that, that's like my main concern when I go in there to do anything. So I haven't driven far back, so maybe that's just a me thing, but do you have any answers on that one? Has it been done yet? And then what, who is it available to?
Sorry Chair, maybe just to clarify, are you just asking the parking that's available there?
Yeah, I saw the, it was in the back of the lot. There was on the order of between seventy-five and a hundred parking spaces and I didn't know that was there. I thought there was only the street and within the building one. So I didn't realize there was all of that. So has it been constructed yet? And when it, when it is constructed, is that going to be available for everyone or is that just for the residents? Or is it going to be a mix, if you know?
To Chair Reho, not exactly sure which area you're referring to, but there is an area, a parking lot kind of behind Wagon Wheel Brewery there that is like open to the public, most of that area. And then there's parking within that parking structure as well that's open to the public. Most of the parking that's around the kind of residential areas, those are going to be for the residents themselves.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question. When we, when permits usually come to us, they usually have a timeline of between, I don't know, eighteen months to three years. Is that for the start of them doing something substantially? And is there something in the city policies or regulations in regards to how quickly they need to be done? Or do you just need to see some progress? And is there any flexibility? Or do you just need to see some progress? Um, and is there any flexibility? I know when the economy has a downturn, Wagon Wheel wasn't done for a while, River Park wasn't like, there was a pause. So I just wanted to know what that flexibility is, because I'm really surprised at the big difference in when projects are completed to aft- to aft- um, after we've approved them. So, um, if you could just give that some context or reply to that.
Sure. So Chair Reho, a lot of, for most of our development projects, there's a three-year timeframe that they have or thirty-six months. Um, our code does allow for a one-year time extension that can be done administratively, so that gives them up to four years. Um, there, these projects, a lot of them kind of happened during that COVID time as well. So there were some, uh, COVID extensions that were granted by the city. So between the three-year time extension, some of the COVID extensions that happened in twenty twenty, um, as well as the administrative extensions, plus this year, there was a state law that passed that granted an additional eighteen months to, uh, residential projects. So that's tends to be, um, what kind of extends that timeframe. And then, um, as you mentioned, it is just for them to start construction. So that initial three-year period, um, that, uh, without the extensions, is just for them to start construction. Once they start construction, as long as they continue to diligently pursue that construction, um, there's not a set timeline on that one.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, I ask that because there is a big project in Port Wayne, Nimi. It's the one in the south end of their city that is old, has been vacant for like, I feel like decades. And it's because the owner hasn't been doing anything. Anyways, that's in Port Wayne, Nimi, so it's their problem. But I just, I, I, I don't want Oxnard to be in that position, or if they are, like, what were the reasons for? So I know that they're undergoing litigation or something like that. So I'm glad that we don't, um, at this time have that problem. So I'm glad. Um, and then just a couple of comments to wrap up, um, that, um, I am still amazed that how much affordable housing that we've been approved and just in general, all the housing. Um, you def- I, I'm obviously biased, but I, I don't think that there can be an argument said that Oxnard is not doing their part in regards to housing and affordable housing, um, especially in relation to our neighboring cities and especially in relation to our neighboring counties even. And so, um, I want to, uh, at least, um, argue against those who say that we haven't been building enough affordable housing. Uh, I really think that we have. There are some cities in our counties whose affordable housing is extremely minimal. Um, and minimal as in, in the tens of percents in regards to the very low affordable housing, which we've even like, uh, biased some of our affordable housing, um, more towards, um, that, uh, income level. So, um, I, kudos to the, I mean, we love to criticize city council, but to the past city councils that have gotten this and hopefully this city council will do it, um, in the future in regard to that, even with the limited land that we have. So, um, if there are no further comments or questions, um, I'll just do a blanket thank you to Mr. Solis and Mr. Mario, was that? Um, thank you for introducing yourself. Do you want to do a more fuller introduction or are you good with what you said?
Uh, no, sure. I'll give a little bit more for all. Uh, recent graduate. I graduated in twenty twenty-three with a background in architecture. Had a couple of years of commercial architecture experience and then, uh, made my way into the city of Oxnard Planning Division. I grew up in San Antonio. So it's an honor to serve, uh, a community like my family and friends come from.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, looking forward to seeing our futures, um, if we didn't scare you off. So thank you very much. Um, before we move into a German, um, I did just want to point out that, um, I know I thank you all in private, um, on, here on the dais. Um, I, I, you know, one of the times when planning commission is heard is when there's a controversy. Um, if you can just Google planning commission, it's, there's a contentious item or something bad has happened. And so, um, I'm not just alluding, I'm like talking about one of our fellow planning commission members in one of our cities in Ventura County. Um, there was controversy and they had to resign. And so that looks bad on their city, but it also looks bad on planning commissioners. And so, um, I know that we hold ourselves in the highest regard and I hope that we can do that, because usually when the news is on us, it's because something negative, not something positive. So hopefully we can do that for all planning commissions and our city of Oxnard just in general. So if there is no further business, the meeting will be adjourned if there is no objection. The meeting is adjourned at six fifty-five PM. Thank you all and good night.